Now call this meeting the Jacksonville City Council to order. I want to welcome all those who are in attendance tonight and those that'll be watching the meeting on G10 television. We're going to begin the meeting tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Dr. Angela Washington, and I'd ask you to rise at this time.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, as all we ask, your blessings this evening. And we give thanks for your presence in our lives, your presence in our community, and all the blessings that you bestow upon us. We pray for peace, for peace among nations, peace among all peoples. Bring us all into the umbrella of your love and teach us to love one another as you love us. We pray for our military who are serving us here and around the world, many in areas that are in harm's way. Keep them safe and bless their anxious families. And as always, give our mayor and our council your guidance and your direction. This we ask in your holy name. Amen.
All received the copy of the agenda for tonight's meeting. I've been asked to take item number four, the transit discussion, off the agenda. So with that in mind, somebody make a motion to adopt.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as revised.
Second.
Hearing none, all in favor, signify a percent. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Next, we have a public comment, and we've had no one sign up for the public comment. I don't think anybody has entered the chambers since the sheet was taken up. So we're going to go next to adoption of the minutes and consent items from minutes from the February 8, 2022 workshop meeting. Motion, please.
Move approval for minutes and consent items as presented for February 8, 2022 workshop meeting?
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify a percent. I say an aye. All opposed. First item on tonight, the agenda, item number two. This is our tax appraiser, Harry Smith, who's going to report on reevaluation. Eric.
Mayor Phillips and council members, and appreciate the opportunity to come and share some information regarding our 2022 reevaluation project this evening. Also with me is Kevin Turner, who's our appraisal supervisor. And when we're talking about reappraisal, what we're basically talking about is a mass appraisal of all the real estate parcels in the county. And the reason that we do this every four years is to try to create a fair and equitable tax base for our citizens. The reason we do it is the North Carolina statutes require the county assessor to value all types of property that are subject to taxation, which includes not only real estate parcels, but it also includes personal property. And we also administer motor vehicles. Even though they're initially valued by the State Department of Revenue under the tag and tax system, our office still handles the appeals for those. When we look at our real estate market, we recognize that over time, values change at different rates due to different factors in our economy, different locations, different types of properties. And over time, this causes inequities in our tax base. Some property values may be changing at higher rates or lower rates than others. The revaluation process is designed to bring everybody back to market value at a certain point in time. So basically, what we're doing is trying to take a snapshot of the market at a point in time, once again with the ideal of creating fairness and equity for our citizens and creating a fair distribution of the tax burden. When we look at the reappraisal history in Anzlo County, North Carolina statutes require that every county in North Carolina conduct a reappraisal at least every eight years. Back in the 1990s, Board of Commissioners recognized that that was too long because of the sticker shock that citizens were experiencing and opted to go for a more frequent reappraisal cycle as allowed by the statutes. They adopted a six-year cycle and then transitioned to a four-year cycle in 2010, and we have been on a four-year cycle ever since the 2010 reappraisal. So this will be our fourth consecutive reappraisal that's been done on a four-year cycle. The revaluation process, when you're on a four-year cycle, as Kevin can tell you, he and his staff are always sort of what we call in revale mode, reviewing property characteristics in the non-reappraisal years. As we get closer to the reappraisal date, much more time is devoted to collecting and verifying sales data, developing the schedule of values, which is basically the rates that are going to be applied to the property characteristics to come up with the new assessed values. And during that process, our appraisers are looking at the different neighborhoods, one neighborhood at a time, and applying the rates that need to or necessary to hit the market value for sales that occurred in that immediate market area. We conduct statistical tests. The State Department of Revenue conducts what we call sales ratio analysis on all 100 counties each year, which basically measures your level of assessment. And what that means is, excuse me, during the reappraisal year, we're supposed to be at 100% market value. Market value is 100%, where ideally our assessed values are equal to sales prices that are occurring in our market. And as IAAO, which is our professional organization, and the State Department of Revenue, give us statistical guidelines to measure our assessment level, as well as some other statistical measures which measure uniformity within our database. So all that goes then to the reappraisal process before we get ready to send the notices out to our citizens to let them know what their new values are. Back in 2003, the state legislature adopted a law that says that each county and municipality must disclose what the revenue neutral tax rate is as part of your budget document during the reappraisal year. And this is, I'd like to point out, this is just a disclosure requirement. There's no requirement that you adopt the revenue neutral tax rate, but that is something that we have to disclose to our citizens so that they can say, see what would be the tax rate if we hadn't done a revale, given this new values, so that they can measure whether the reappraisal was being used to increase taxes or not. We have been letting the public know, we did a couple of segments with our Anzlo County Today Show. Our social media has been having some information out there, and we'll be pushing out some more when the notices are mailed out. And of course, this information is available on the tax page of the county website. And I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time going through these slides. We have several slides which are kind of indicative of what our appraisers are seeing out in the market, but I will spend a little bit of time on the first slide just to let you know what the data is. Up at the top of the slide, you see the parcel number, which is our parcel number that's assigned by the tax office. You'll see the 2018 assessed value, which is the value that was assigned to this property based on the 2018 schedule of value, so it's been in place for four years. The neighborhood number, the location, this one's in Jacksonville Township. And down at the bottom left, you'll see the sales price and the sales date, which occurred before this coming revale. And then the bottom right shows you how that sales price compares to the old assessed value, if you will. So basically, on this property, it was assessed at 237, sold for 327, so that calculation comes out to a 37% increase. And I'm just going to kind of go through these slides rather quickly because there's quite a few of them, but we do have this same presentation with some additional slides on our county website, so I would just invite you to go look through that. You'll see, this is just representative of some of the things that are in the market. You'll see some that are lower than others, some that are much higher, just depending on the location and some of those factors we mentioned earlier. So this one's here in the city of Jacksonville. You can see this one had a 16% increase compared to the old assessed value. Townhouses were a little unique. We put a couple of townhouse slides in here because, as we mentioned, during reappraisals, different properties change at different rates, and their townhouse market was fairly depressed during the last reappraisal. You can see that unit was valued at $73,000. It recently sold for $127, which is a much higher percentage increase associated with that transaction. This one, I believe, is in the Northwoods neighborhood. See, that one's a 41% increase. And that one, I believe, was in Brenmore, if I'm not mistaken. It sold for $169. The old value was $115. Moving to the Richwoods Township, I believe this home is out in the Rock Creek area. This was a newer subdivision in the Richwoods Township, shows about a 35% increase. This one's up in White Oak Landing in the White Oak Township, recently sold for $240, and the old value was $162. This was Highland Forest over off Piney Green. Another townhouse in the White Oak Township. Moving down to Swansboro, I think this was at one of the subdivision standoffs of... Just drew a blank, but anyway, I think it's in Fox Trace subdivision down off Sand Ridge Road, and shows a 45% increase. A newer subdivision, $300,000 compared to the old value of $221, which is a 35% increase. I think this is Halls Creek, north in Swansboro area, a 68% increase over the old assessed value. This was down on Elm Street, down on the Swansboro waterfront, close in the downtown area. And this was in one of the other neighborhoods that was close to the downtown area. Moving down to the Stump Sound area, this was a 43% increase. This one recently sold for $245, and the old value was $164. This was Justin Farms, $281 compared to $186. That's been a really hot area of the county. This was down in Holly Ridge, neighborhoods of Holly Ridge subdivision, and they saw quite a significant increase also based on the old assessed values compared to the recent sales prices. Couple of examples over at the beach. This was a second row water view dwelling over on Surf City, and you can see it basically sold for more than twice what the old value was. Another significant sales price compared to old assessed value in North Topsail Beach. Another nice home in North Topsail Beach. This one's an oceanfront subdivision. And like I said, there's lots more on the slides and examples in the marketplace that show lesser increases. Everything's not going up that much, but as you can see, pretty much across the county there are increases, just the amount just depends to what degree based on the property type and the location and those types of things. One thing we also like to mention during reappraisal year is that real property is only valued at market value during the reappraisal year. Personal property, on the other hand, is valued at market value each year. So like typically, may not be this year, but typically automobile values decrease, business personal property would decrease, manufactured homes that are personal property typically would see a reduction in value. So once again, the purpose, not only to reduce inequities in the real estate market, but also comparing real estate properties to other types of property that are taxed, with the objective to equalize assessments within the county. This chart basically just kind of gives you a quick overview of the type of property that makes up our tax base. And as you can see, residential real estate on the county level is about 69% of our total tax base, and commercial and industrial would be about 15%, and then other things make up a much lower percentage. Just tried to cover a few questions, and then we'll have an opportunity for you to ask questions also. Obviously, we're nearing the end of the project and getting ready to send reappraisal notices out to all of our property owners. And first thing is, what happens if I disagree with my assessed value? And we do have a process in place to address that. We have an online appeals forum where people can just go online and submit their information and tell us why they feel like their property may not be valued correctly. That's called an informal review. After that process will work out in the March and April timeframe. The Board of Equalization Review is the formal appeals process, and that consists of a five-member citizen board that is appointed annually by the Board of County Commissioners. All the folks that are currently serving on that board are experienced with real estate values and are very knowledgeable of our market. They're made up of surveyors, brokers, and appraisers, so they know their real estate values. Those hearings will commence in May, and we'll run the course. Hopefully, they'll be wrapped up by the end of June before budgets are adopted, but during reappraisal year, that's not necessarily always the case. The statutes do allow for Board of Equalization and Review to keep hearing after the appeals deadline meets up until December 1st. They have to be concluded by then. And beyond that, we'd be appealing the value to the North Carolina Property Tax Commission, which is a part of the Department of Revenue, and that's a much more formal process that occurs up in Raleigh. We ask our taxpayers to provide information to support their opinion of value, some of the things that we can't consider is just the percentage of change from the last reappraisal or their ability to pay. We have to be factual and just look at the condition of the property and the value of the property when making those determinations. Sometimes they may have had an appraisal that was recently done, maybe they just purchased a property or refinanced it. Perhaps there's some type of conditions with the property, the bathroom floors rotten out, things we wouldn't know about. We ask them to give us pictures of the condition that we may not be aware of, so that would help justify a reduction. And also comparative sales in the neighborhood. We feel like we have a pretty good sales database to draw from, but we also ask folks if they know of another property that may have sold that's comparable to ours, then we'll certainly take a look at that and keep that in consideration. Some folks want to know, why my value changed so much from last year? And we always try to point out that the bill that you got last year had your value that was established four years ago. So you're really looking at a four-year change of value when you look at your new value. It didn't just happen from last year, it was over a four-year period of time. And as we're tracking our assessment level, we had a chart yesterday, which isn't in this presentation, but you can really tell that around the middle of 2020 through 21, there was a really sharp increase in property values. I guess that's when building supplies started going through the roof, just like supply shortages and prices have really escalated over the past 18 months or so. The 2020 values will be the basis for real property sales that occurred in 2021. So basically, when we're setting these values, we're looking at sales that occurred in the months leading up to the reappraisal. And as we saw, just tracking sales during the year, even sales that happened earlier in 2021 are sort of outdated by the time we got to January 22 timeframe. And once again, we try to emphasize that we're trying to equalize property values, not the increased revenues. The one question we can answer now is how much my taxes will change. As we talked about, the revaluation basically is used by the governing boards and the finance offices to look at the total value of all the properties within their jurisdiction. And of course, the amount of taxes are influenced by the revenue requirements, the budget needs of each individual municipality or town or county government. And then the rate has to be determined by the Board of Commissioners or the city council to ultimately determine how much it will actually impact each individual. The new values are effective as of January 1, 2022, and those values will be the basis for the tax bills that will be mailed this year and due September 22. And I tried to keep it quick so it didn't take too much your time, but that's what we had in our presentation. But if you have any additional questions, we'll be more than happy to try to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for that presentation. That was interesting. I was really surprised by how much the beach had really gone up compared to the rest of the county. We have a lot of commercial property here. What are you seeing on the commercial side versus the residential?
I think overall, we're going to be seeing increases in the commercial, but not to the degree that we see in residential.
If I remember right, the last revale, the commercial really shot up here in Jacksonville, whereas a residential didn't do as much. So they're bouncing out a little bit more. We're seeing more residential increase this time.
Yeah, and we'll, once we get our values finalized, then be able to provide you some data to show the different rates of change within each of those categories.
In an area where there's a dearth of sales data, how far do you extend that to pick up comparable sales information to apply to that particular neighborhood or neighborhoods?
Well, we start with each individual neighborhood, and generally speaking, we treat each subdivision like a neighborhood. And when the, if there are sufficient sales within that one neighborhood to establish values, that's what we use. There are occasions where there may not be enough sales within one neighborhood, and then we have to group similar neighborhoods to set the values. But we try to keep it as close-knit to, so we're dealing with comparable properties as possible. Kevin, feel free to chime in.
You said it well.
Okay.
Based on that comment, it sounds like the commercial is really your toughest to appraise, isn't it?
It is, yeah.
Because you just don't have as much sales and the comps are not readily available, are they?
Right. That's correct.
So how, what do you base, what do you do then if you don't have the comps for commercial?
Well, we actually contracted out with a commercial appraiser firm to help us with that, and they have access to more data than we do internally. They're able to get sales from a regional basis. They can do more of an income analysis for income-producing properties that are rented, what you're renting retail space or apartments and those types of things. And you can use an income capitalization approach also to give you an indication of the value. And that will be used in coming up with the income values or with the commercial values also.
And if you don't mind my monopolizing here. We had a controversy a few years ago on some of the big boxes. What have we done this time to address those concerns on the front end?
Well, the concern, I guess, was their assertion that it should be based on dark store theory, and I don't think anybody's been successful prosecuting an appeal and winning at that basis in North Carolina. So we're basically, you know, valuing them based on their income potential and market data, same as the other commercial properties.
So we did, we did address some concerns on, if I remember right, there were a few that pushed the dark box theory, and we kind of acquiesced a little bit, I think, at that time. But now you're saying there's case law or at least precedence that that's not a viable theory?
I don't think there's actually any case law in North Carolina. There have been some cases decided against the dark store theory in some other states, but as far as I recall, I don't recall that there's any case law per se in North Carolina.
But at this point, we're not going to do the dark box, is what I'm hearing. Okay, thank you.
That was a question I was going to ask, but I have one. How extensive are you using drones to find improvements to property, and how do you go by doing that?
Well, we don't use drones. We do have a program called Eagle View, which is, the program itself is called Pictometry. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that or not. But what this is, it's not a drone, but it's actually an airplane that flies, and we have the whole county flown this year, actually. And what they do is take what's called a bleak aerial photography. And so rather than your traditional aerial photography where you're just looking straight down on the top of buildings, it's like at a 45-degree angle, and you can see the building from all four sides. And the resolution that we have this time is much better than we had four years ago. And our IT department can be more than happy to share that information with you, so you have access to it also. We have it on our website. It's not the, the internal version has a little more functionality. It actually has measuring tools. You can actually go in and measure the heights of buildings. And our appraisers use that to do property reviews in between the last reappraisal. During COVID, when we had some folks working from home, they used the pictometry program to do field reviews, and we picked up a lot of additions that weren't on the tax rolls by using that. But that's the closest thing we would have to a drone, I guess.
Couple of staff questions after the council's finished, so please continue. Okay. When would you project that we will actually have the numbers that we can use for budgeting purposes?
Early next week.
Early next week?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's good. You know, generally, the city receives about $28, $29 million in property tax. I don't want the council to think that when you see the values, that that means you're going to have significant revenue increases. Hopefully, we will. But I want to go back to a point that Mr. Smith mentioned. You will be faced, as you are every year, with revale, revaluation on determining what is the new tax rate. By law, you are required to show, as he stated, the revenue neutral. And I want to make sure the public understands what revenue neutral means. So would you explain that again?
I will try. Basically, it's the rate given the new values that would give the municipality or the county the same amount of revenue had you not done a revale, but it does give you the allowance for the natural growth that you've experienced in between. So if you've been naturally growing 3% a year, you go revenue neutral, then you add the 3% to that to get your growth figure incorporated into that.
Now, again, that does not require, there is nothing in the law that requires you to adopt the revenue neutral number. You have to show it, as he has said, in your budget. The challenge will be for this year, for the city of Jacksonville, is with limited revenue growth, what will be your tax rate? Current tax rate is 64.2. It's too early to project what the revenue neutral rate would be. I would assume that it is probably less than 64.2, given the values that we're seeing. But eventually, you as a council will have to vote on the new tax rate. I'd like to ask Gail if she has questions. Okay, John, questions? Okay. Given the fact that we will have the revenue numbers next week, we hope that we can stay on schedule to be presenting to you your budgets. The next budget schedule will be on March 8. That's two weeks from tonight. We'll be discussing several preliminary budget items, and Gail is projecting that she should have the full budget to you, full budget books to you by early April. Any other comments?
No, sir. If you have any other questions after the fact, please just give us a call, and we'll be more than happy to get you out every information that you need.
When would the public expect the new tax rates to be mailed out to them?
They're at the printer now, so as soon as we get a proof back that looks good. We had a proof today, and there was a couple of address issues in there, so we had to regroup a little bit, but hopefully they'll be out end of this week or by Monday at the latest.
Probably get a lot of complaints, but I had the experience last year of contacting your staff on more than one occasion, and I have to say they were very friendly and efficient. Good service.
Well, Mr. Smith and Mr. Turner, thank you very much for coming and being with us this evening and delivering that information.
You're certainly welcome. Thank you.
And there's a discussion on the health insurance.
Mayor, members of council, good evening. On the February 8 meeting, we discussed the health insurance plan, that is a self-funded plan. There were four items that you asked us to get additional information on. The first was, if you could go to away from self-insurance and go to a standard plan, we're going to discuss that. The second is stop-loss information. The third is information on the industry premiums and what they're seeing, and then, of course, the recommended increase. When it comes to the standard plan, we have contacted the several carriers. What they have told us is this. You can buy a standard plan, but the rates are going to be based upon our own experience. Why is that? Because we're a group of more than 500 participants. As you'll remember, we have over 900 lives that are covered by the health insurance program. That includes your city employees, their spouses, it includes two of the elected officials. But what they have said is that the premiums, whether you're self-insured or whether you buy a policy straight off the shelf, the premiums are going to be based upon your own experience. Now, if you're in a smaller group, and let's say that you're a business of 20 people, yes, you can buy a policy so that your 20 are part of a much larger pool. But once you get to be a certain size, as the city of Jacksonville is, you are in fact your own group for premium purposes. There are advantages and disadvantages to being in your own pool, being self-insured. The premium increase, if you were in the, you know, it is based upon your group, the premium increase for FY '23, if we were looking at an industry package, we project to be about 4.3%. It could be as high as 8%, but we believe it's about 4.3. The other part about a standard plan, which I think is very important, is after expenses, any surplus or profit would go to the insurance company. So for example, if you end the year and you have, after all expenses, you have $200,000, that $200,000 would stay obviously with the insurance company. The other part is if you have a bad year, and let's say that you lost money, that the claims were $200,000 more than the premiums you paid, the insurance company would pay that. But I also want to go back up to the second bullet. Your next year... Your next year's premiums are going to be based upon your experience. So it's not as if you were establishing a mortgage on a home where you would be guaranteed that for 30 years you have a fixed rate and your payment is, pick a number, $1,000 a month. If I can make this move. There you go. On the self-insurance, once again, the size of the city group, we're self-rated. It doesn't matter, you know, what is happening at the county or what's happening with the school board. If you're self-insured, again, just like we said with the standard policy, because we are a group of over 500 people, our rates are going to be based upon our experience. You'll recall that we have looked at this and we believe that the premium increase for FY '23, '24 should, in fact, be somewhere 4% to 5%. What we're recommending to you is a 1% or 2% increase because we have really had some significant increases over the last three or four years. We're trying to hold down the impact. The other part is after expenses, any profit does go back to the plan. On the other hand, remember what I said a while ago. If the expenses are greater than the revenue, you have to come up with it. And that's the reason why we have talked to you about making sure that if you're going to stay self-funded, that you have at least $1 million in your healthcare reserve. Now, the second thing you ask us to look at is your stop loss. What is a stop loss? A stop loss means that the most exposure your health plan can incur is a certain number. Our insurance is at $100,000. So what does that mean? That means that if you have a major illness, the city plan is going to pay all of the money up to $100,000. Once it passes $100,000, from that point on, the insurance company picks it up. I want you to look at the numbers, though. The premium we're currently paying is $666,000 a year. Now, remember, our plan is a $5 million plan. $666,000 is going to the stop loss. That is bid out every year. You're going to see the new number in just a minute. Historically, we have six to eight claims that meet or that met the 100,000 number. So if you're in the insurance business and you are exceeding the 100,000, what that means is that whatever is over that 100,000 is your responsibility, is not the first 100,000. The first 100,000 is our plan. So if we have eight claims, that means that the city health plan has paid $800,000. We don't actually have information that shows us how far above the 100,000 those claims go. It is part of the actuarial study that is done to create the premium. Currently, in this year, we have three, and remember, our fiscal year for the health plans, the same as the budget, starts July 1. We have three claims that have already hit $100,000. We have six claims that are between 500, between $50,000 and $100,000. And again, traditionally, we will have six to eight claims that will get to the $100,000 stop loss. You ask what would happen if we went to 50,000? Well, the answer is apparently nothing. We cannot get, we could not find a single insurance company that would quote a $50,000 stop loss. Let me show you possibly why. The next slide, we did find one that would quote a $75,000 stop loss. And I want you to look at the premium. $1.1 million. I want to remind you, our current premium on a $100,000 stop loss is $666,000. To drop it $25,000, went up $474,000. And the risk exposure, if you did that, using, again, the six to eight number, the risk exposure is $100,000 to $200,000. So return on your investment, which is not a term I really like, but it's a term I think that's applicable here. You could drop your premium or your stop loss to 75,000. You would incur an additional $474,000 in premiums. Your exposure is at most 200,000. We really couldn't recommend that to you. Let's look at what we got in as far as the bid to stay at 100,000. Because of our experience, we have been told that our premium on the 100,000 stop loss will go up by $83,000. It's going from 666 to 749 to 23. As far as the exposure, the exposure is the same. It's 100,000 for us and above 100,000 for the insurance company. We also ask about 125,000 stop loss. The premium here is actually $2,000 less than you're paying this year. But look at your exposure. You're picking up an additional $25,000 for every claim that hits 100,000. So again, financially, that, to me, is not someplace that you want to go. From an industry standpoint, we're being told 5% to 8% for a group our size. Now, there are some groups that are significantly higher because of the exposure and the experience they have. Our claims show that we should be at 4.3%. What we're recommending is either a 1% or 2%. And let me remind you why. Currently, the health plan reserve is at 1.3 million. We feel comfortable taking part of that money, but never again below 1 million. And let me refresh everybody's memory. We spent that thing, that's, that was bad. I shouldn't have said it that way. We spent the fund balance down to less than $300,000 at one time. And we, as a city, and our employees, paid for it. How? With back-to-back 15% and 25% premiums. You need to always have a fund balance that is healthy. And our recommendation to you, and you have not adopted a policy on this, but our recommendation is have at least $1 million. It's all right to take the surplus. And I'll remind you, who owns the surplus? It's not the city. It's the city and the members who are paying. Because that surplus is paid and created how? It's paid by the premiums you pay for the employee. It's also created by the premiums the employees pay. So the only way that this fund balance, in my opinion, and I'm going to use the word legally, John will probably tell you he would agree with that, is, do you agree with that, sir? No, he doesn't. Okay, hear the rest of the story. You know, you should never use any of this fund balance for any reason other than health insurance. Why? Because it wasn't created by anything other than health insurance premiums. So again, our recommendation is to use some of this fund balance to try to hold down the premium cost. Let's talk about the premium cost one more time. If you're a city employee, a 1% increase and you have the $1,750 deductible, you will see that this is the annual increase. That's not the weekly increase. You will also see that 1% annually, actually, that is the weekly increase. Every two weeks. This is the pay, this is the increase per pay. At least I think it is. We've done through so many numbers. The point being, 1% is what we're recommending. What does it cost the city? Well, your contribution will be $46,784. And if you went to 2%, it would be twice that, which obviously is about $94,000. So our recommendation to you tonight is the following. Increase the premium 1%. No change to deductible or coverage, and no change to stop loss, and use your reserve if there is a need. I'll also remind you this. This is not property tax. Unlike the property tax, once you set the rate, that is the rate for the year. On this, three or four or six months into it, if we find that we have missed the mark, we can always come back and change the premiums. Why? Because it is a fee. It's not considered a tax. Any questions that you have that we have not answered? Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, Dr. Woodruff. What percentage of, again, of our employees do not carry health insurance? Wasn't there an issue about that a couple of years ago?
A number of our employees do not carry health insurance. And you remember from the presentation two weeks ago, we're actually seeing a reduction in participation. And right now, we have 434 of our 582 eligible employees that are covered. Now, some of those that are not covered by us are covered by TRICARE. But as the premiums have continued to increase, we are seeing employees that are simply backing out of the program because they cannot afford it. You will recall, and we have some of the slides hidden if you'd like to see them. When you look at the family coverage, even for the 2,750 deductible plan, and you see on an annual basis, that's almost $9,000 that they are paying in premiums for that family coverage. I mean, those numbers, you can see why so many, you know, it doesn't matter whether you're making $40,000 or $80,000. That type of health insurance premium is very difficult for families. So we are seeing every year attrition. We also see, as people retire and they're moving, let's say, their spouse, because by the time they normally retire, their children have grown, many of them are being replaced by single adults. And of course, when they become single, that means that the number of participant automatically comes down, and that has nothing to do with the premiums themselves.
Have you ever thought about the possibility that when we, when council approves for the yearly increases in wages, if an employee, instead of receiving the yearly raise, have that certain amount to be paid towards their health insurance premium to maybe provide another option for those individuals who are without insurance?
We have discussed that. We have an insurance committee, first of all, that meets every month. Insurance committee is made up of the finance director, the HR director, and the city management, and several others. Deputy manager sits in, the, one of the people in HR sits in along with Kimberly. And we meet every month with our financial advisor for health insurance. That's Hank Eastep with with his company. Now, we have discussed that in the past. My memory is a little cloudy, but I want to say that under the current law, that that's not something you're allowed to do. But I want to check on that and see. I will say this, years ago in the private sector, we actually offered employees different packages. For example, if all you wanted was vacation and sick leave and pay, and you did not want to be on any retirement plan, and you didn't want to be on any type of insurance, then this is your package. If, on the other hand, you wanted some additional benefits, then this was your package. But that was in the private sector. We will check to see if something like that's available. John, do you, Gail, do you have any memory on that? We will check and and find it. Ron, do you have any memory on that? Okay, we will check on that. But I believe that that's no longer allowed, but we'll verify.
Okay. And then I just have one more question, sir. In the past, when employees decided that they wanted to purchase health insurance, they could also buy supplemental, like long-term, sick-term, cancer insurance. And my reason that I'm asking is that because of what has happened to our country with the pandemic and COVID, are you seeing insurance companies offering a COVID supplement insurance package for employees? Because I I know how that has gripped some of our employees to the point they've had to reduce the amount of sick days to cover them while they was out. So is that going to be an option for our employees?
First of all, your question was, have I seen it? The answer is no. What I will also tell you, though, is there supplement, the supplemental policies, which we have traditionally had, they continue. And those premiums are nominal. Supplemental policies include dental, vision, and some other things. What we can also tell you, though, is that if you're in the health plan, the medical bill portion of a COVID, of a COVID, of a COVID experience is covered by the health plan. On the other hand, if it impacts your your economics, then there are products in the market, and I won't mention a specific duck that, you know, that you can buy from, but there are supplemental policies. Gail, do we offer any of those supplemental pay policies?
We do. We used to have the duck, but they're from a different company now. We do offer cancer, short-term disability. There are now more products to choose from, accident.
And of course, the city does not contribute anything to those. That's strictly the employees' decision.
Okay.
Are those done through payroll deduction?
Yes, sir.
That's what I thought.
I got a question, Dr. Woodruff. I'm wondering, because you mentioned TRICARE coverage, and that's more so retirees and medically retired. But I was wondering how many veterans in particular is using the VA benefit? And the possibility of how many could but don't know they can?
We, a good point, we would not have that data. You know, the, because of the HIPAA regulations, there's only so much that an employer is allowed to ask of an employee. I mean, I can tell you, if you do the simple math, 434 are currently covered out of 580. I couldn't tell you how many of them are like, you know, you may be, that's covered by TRICARE. We're just simply not allowed to know that. Other questions?
Look at the plans and make sure what our package is, is adequate enough for what we're giving to the staff and people that use it.
We do that on an annual basis. And unfortunately, what has happened is because of premiums and because of cost, our plan has been, if I may use the term, skinny down. Currently, you have seen that we have basically two plans, a 1,750 and a 2,750 deductible. Those of you who've been on council will recall, at one point, we had four plans where you could have a $500 deductible. Those premiums got so large and we had so few people who were participating in them that we had to cut that down. The other thing you will recall is that we made significant, and this is one of the advantages of being self-insured, we found that we were having significant cost by people going to the emergency room for non-emergency activities. So we have changed the deductible so that if you go to the doctor, it's a $35 deductible. You go to the emergency room, it's a $300 deductible. That's our decision. Why? Because we wanted to drive people away from going to the emergency room unless it was a true emergency. The other thing I would remind you is that a couple of years ago, we started something that is commonly referred to as phone a doc. Now, technically, our contract was a company, is with a company called the Healthiest U. What is that? That's a program where at no deductible and in the comfort of your own home or wherever you may be, you can pick up the phone and you can dial that number. You will get a licensed doctor, not a, not a physician's, a physician's assistant and not a nurse. You will get a licensed doctor in North Carolina to review with you what the problem is. And again, you can do that 24 hours a day. You can do that from your home, or you come to work, you can do it there. You don't have to take time off. There is no deductible. We save about $150,000 a year by your employees participating in that phone a doc program. And it has been very beneficial. There are many times, however, after the interview with the doctor, and it can either be a verbal or it can now be a virtual interview. So for example, let's say that your child is 2:00 in the morning and they're broken out with a bad rash. You can do it virtually where the doctor can actually give you an exam. However, the doctor will also come to a point where he'll say, that's, I don't feel comfortable making the diagnosis. You need to go to your medical provider in the morning. But that has saved us significant money over the years. From a budget standpoint, we would like for you, if you're comfortable tonight, if not, March the 8th. From a budget standpoint, we would like for you, if you're comfortable tonight, if not, March the 8th, we'd like for you to decide, are you comfortable with a 1% or a 2% or even a higher percent? What are you comfortable with? Because we are now to the point where we're building the budget, and we are beginning to ask you for some, not final votes, but for some consensus.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the recommendation of a 1% increase in the premiums for employees.
To diversity options, sir?
Considering, right, with adopting the recommendations 2 through 4 there also.
I'll second that. Further discussion? Just out of curiosity, as part of that motion, would including that $1 million reserve fund be established in that motion?
Important for the city council, because again, you know, all of these funds, whether it's Water and Sewer Fund or whether it's the Health Fund, they are the funds that you have the fiduciary responsibility for. And I would certainly welcome you to establish a policy that says we will not go below the $1 million number without your specific approval.
Is that acceptable to add to your motion, or?
Sure.
How about also making sure we reevaluate it in six months? Any...
Well, bring a report back every year as part of your budget. You need to have a report that says, not just the things about experience, but where is that fund balance in your health plan?
You know, six months or whatever, wherever, if, from now or into the new fiscal year, here's what we're looking at. And actually, you're going to need to do one sometime in June or July and say, here's where we ended up or where we project. So I'm comfortable with that.
I'm comfortable with that. All right, any other discussion? Here, if anyone in favor, signify a 100.
Aye.
All opposed?
A quick review or preview of two weeks away. We, John has spent a lot of time researching some of the issues with Ron and with Anthony on transit. We were not ready tonight because there are some critical issues that we are still trying to determine. We anticipate March the 8th transit. We will also anticipate on March the 8th to bring back to you an evaluation of the recycling contract. I will tell you that while there's not a lot of good news in your budget, there actually has been very good news when it comes to recycling. And we'll show you those numbers. But next week, we, two weeks away, we will be asking you to make a decision, if you're ready, on transit and also on your recycling fees for the coming year. But I think you're going to be, you're not going to be happy on one, but I think you are going to be happy on the other. Thank you very much.
At least you got the big, one of the big stumbling blocks out of the way as far as the insurance. Would that go to reports, and I can start with Mr. Sosa?
Well, basically, I'd like to say, I went to Winterfest this past weekend, and I saw other people there as well. And, you know, my son, he really enjoyed it, especially the snow slide. I guess that's what you call it, the snow. He enjoyed it, he wanted to go. He thought every time he went down, he could just turn around and go back again. He didn't see the long line, but he really, he really did enjoy it. He had a great time, and so, so do we as well. Thanks. That was it.
Mr. Jackson?
I, I actually went to several Black History Month programs, to include programs at the library. I've done a couple of proclamations, one at Chicana Glory, and I'll be doing one at Washington Chapel in a week or so, in next weekend. We had our first Black History Month festival. So all of that was enjoyable and great to see the celebration of blacks, African-Americans in our history. And hopefully, we can go beyond a month in doing that, because that is American history. But then also, last weekend, we had, we probably had about 30 volunteers from the Marine Corps and from the world's finest Navy, by the way. But a lot from the Marine Corps that come out of Belle Fort Hume's working those ditches. I actually, I had planned for a 12 o'clock lunch. And they started, which was supposedly been 10, but of course, the Marine Corps was out there at 9:00. And they were finished by about 10:30. And they had filled two bins. So it was just incredible support by, by the young military personnel. And they, they are eager for anything else that happens in, in the community. They are definitely eager to come out. Those volunteers was provided by Ms. Raquel Painter, who's director, executive director over at United Way, and Ms. Yolanda Mayo, who works in operations on base. So I definitely appreciated all that happened this weekend. And it was just, it was a joy to be out there with them. That's all.
Yeah, I'd like to report that Mr. Ward and I, along with other directors of Onwassa, met as part of an interview team a few weeks back and pleased to announce that we have appointed, effective March 7th, I believe it is, Mr. Frankie Howard as the new executive director for Onwassa. Mr. Howard comes to Onwassa with 14 years' experience as county manager for Jones County and has the appropriate credentials and qualifications, which harbor, I think, a good transition for him taking over the reins of Onwassa. That's it.
Dr. Washington?
Yes, sir. I have a report to give to, to our council and our citizens in the city of Jacksonville. First and foremost, this is coming from my involvement with the North Carolina Military Affairs Commission. And just to let everyone know that Fayetteville State University, of course, in Fayetteville, North Carolina, which is HBCU, Historically Black College and University, is now offering free tuition for military individuals. This particular scholarship is entitled Military Tuition Scholarship. That's for active-duty military, military spouses, their dependents, as well as their veterans. On a positive note, Operation Home Front, which is a nonprofit organization that started in 2002, following 9/11. Basically, this particular organization offers an annual Military Child of the Year recognition. And I'm pleased to announce that for 2022, Operation Home Front recognized as five finalists for the seven branches of services to include the United States Space Force, the United States Navy, the National Guard, the United States Marine Corps, the United States Coast Guard, the United States Air Force, and the United States Army. It is my pleasure to announce that for the Military Child of the Year finalists from North Carolina, we actually have four out of five for the United States Marine Corps. Naomi Gordon, 16 years old, from Sneece Ferry, North Carolina, is a student at Lejeune High School. Madeline Cobles, 17 years, 17 years old, from Trentwood, North Carolina. So that's on the outskirts of New Bern. Connor Nichol, 13 years old, from Carthage, North Carolina. That's on the outskirts of Fayetteville. And his brother Ian Nichol, 15 years old, is also Carthage, outside of Fayetteville, North Carolina. In addition, Sophia Gordon, 13 years old, from Fort Worth, Texas, is on this list. But the reason I'm going to include her from North Carolina is that two years ago, her father PCS to Fort Worth. So had she not PCSed, she would have been a student at Brewster Middle School. So I'm claiming her with the five finalists for the United States Military. So all five of those are competing for the Military Child of the Year for the Marine Corps. In addition, for the United States Coast Guard, we have one, Courtney Baynard, 18 years of age, from Hubert, North Carolina. So I'm assuming that she is a student at Swansboro, North Carolina. And then finally, we have the Military Child of the Year Innovation Award. And this is for Mr. Connor Nichol. He previously was part of the Military Child of the Year finalist for the Marine Corps. So this young man, 13 years of age, is actually up for two years, I mean, excuse me, two awards for the Military Child of the Year. So the finalist will be made to the public on March the 8th. And so North Carolina is very well represented, well represented with at least seven potential finalists representing the state of North Carolina. So that is a kudo for us. And then lastly, I just wanted to bring it to the awareness, if everyone is not aware of this. The North Carolina Legislature, House Bill 83, passed this year with regards to tax exemption on military pay for veterans' income that served in the military 20 years or more. So North Carolina is another state within the United States is allowing tax exemption, particularly state tax exemption, for military income for their contributions and services to the military for 20 years or more. And that completes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Ward?
None, shut me off if this is improper. But I wanted to thank the council for your deciding to partner with the economic development folks in, in pursuing some, some business opportunities here in Jacksonville and Onslow County. So thank you. I know I wasn't allowed to participate or influence any of you, so I didn't say anything prior to. But on the back end, thank you all. I think prosperity is probably the most important thing that we can offer, one of the most important things we can offer our citizens. And this will go, goes a ways towards providing that for them. So thank you. And then John didn't cut me off, so it must have been okay, must have been legal.
Dr. Woodruff?
Mayor, did you have comments?
All right, now.
Okay. Two things. Winterfest, as Mr. Sosa mentioned, was, we think, a great success. And we'd like to run some film and footage of the Winterfest activity. So if media would run these? Now, this is the first year that the city has actually owned the snowmaking equipment. We bought it used from the company that went out of business, who had traditionally provided this. And your crews were, I think, very well-prepared and well-staffed. They were trained earlier this week, or last week, I should say, by the person we bought the equipment from. And then two of the workers of the former company were there to help supervise. We think that next year, it can be an even larger addition. You may recall that traditionally, they've had four slides. Unfortunately, two of those slides were sold before we bought. And so next year, we hope to have four or more slides. We recognize, when you talk about Winterfest, some people come to ride the ponies, some people come to do some ice skating. Most people come for one reason, and that is the sledding. There is a rumor that Mrs. Bittner actually went down the high slide, but I'll let Mr. Bittner verify or deny that rumor.
I hear nothing, I see nothing.
Do you have any estimate on the number of people that attended?
We believe there was probably 2,000 or 3,000. You know, you had such a large area there and people coming and going. We hope that next year, it will be much larger. So. The other thing that we would like is, before you leave this evening, if you would check with the city clerk, the interim clerk, to ask, verify if you were available on March the 15th. The original budget schedule did not include that because we had incorrectly identified one of you as being gone on the 15th. So if we can do the 15th, we will. If one of you is not going to be here, then we will continue to cancel that meeting. So. That's all for me, sir.
Mr. Clark?
No reports.
Do you entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor? Six, five, a 100? All opposed?